The next item on the agenda is the public forum. This is the time when citizens are encouraged but also invited to address the school board on any matter of concern about our school division. Some citizens have signed up in advance. And at last check, we have eighty, forty-eight persons sign up in advance. If you do the math, that's one hundred and ninety-two minutes, or about three hours. With that, we're going to follow the same format that we did on January the thirtieth for our public forum. The school board and staff are prepared to hear from you tonight. However, the board will limit your remarks to three minutes instead of four, so that persons are not waiting up to three hours to speak. I'm going to now entertain a motion from the board. Is there a motion to amend the time limit for each speaker from four minutes to three minutes?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mrs. Shea. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion is passed. I would also like to take this opportunity to note that one of the proposed policy revisions currently under consideration by the board is one that will reduce the time allotment for public forum speakers from four minutes to three minutes. Approval of that policy change is to be expected next month. If you are unable to get through the first forty-eight speakers this evening in a timely manner, we will not be hearing from speakers who did not sign up in advance. Please know for us, a united front can be as powerful as many individual speakers are. We encourage neighborhoods to select a spokesperson. And during the spokesperson's remarks, that person can ask that his or her supporters stand in order to be recognized at that time. This will allow us to expedite and allow persons to speak without the encumbrance of time. We ask that each speaker come to the microphone and clearly state your name, as well as your neighborhood, or if you have one, your school affiliation. If we do have time for additional speakers who did not sign up in advance, we ask that you write your name and contact information on the sign-in form located on the table behind the podium after you finish speaking. Also, if you have handouts that you'd like to share with us, the board, please make sure that your name is on them before you give them to the clerk to my right. To assist you in tracking your time on the podium, there is a time-tracking, time-keeping system. Speakers will have three minutes for your time limit. The light will be green as you begin your remarks. The yellow light means you have one minute remaining, and we ask that you stop speaking when the light turns red. Know tonight that the school board and staff are here to hear from you, the community. And speakers should speak directly to the board. Unfortunately, we will not be responding to speakers, but we do appreciate your attendance here this evening and providing us with your input. And if you're unable to speak to us personally, please know that you can email us, or you can call us, and we will receive, as well as we will respond to your inquiries. When all speakers have finished speaking, we want to thank you in advance. We're going to begin, what I'm going to do is I'm going to call three names at a time. First person will come up to the podium and speak, and we ask that the remaining two, in order to expedite the time, will sit on the front row, and then you can speak immediately after the first speaker. First person is Ms. Yow Levin. Second person is Sharon Adams. And the third person is Amber Hornbarger.
I yield my time to stand to say thank you.
Thank you, madam. Are you yielding it to an individual or just in general?
Just in general.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am. So after Mrs. Hornbarger, Mary Morrissey, would you come up, please, ma'am? So Ms. Sharon Adams will go first. Ms. Adams? No Ms. Adams? Okay. Sharon Adams, going once, going twice? Can we get John Reeves to come up? John Reeves? Thank you. We're going to begin then with Ms. Amber Hornbarger. Thank you, Ms. Hornbarger.
Good evening. My name is Amber Hornbarger, and I'm a fourth-grade teacher at Glen Lee Elementary, and I also own a home in the Three Chop district. I'm here to share a few of my concerns about Glen Lee Elementary's facilities. Dr. Cashwell, in your first one-hundred days, you shared a book with us in your passport, The Little Big Things by Tom Peters. So I read it. And the first chapter states that it's all about the restrooms, and that a clean and attractive bathroom is a way that we signal that we care. Well, here's my chapter one for Glen Lee. The county's nineteen-twenty capital improvement plan states that Glen Lee will receive a security enhancement, but we also need a health and sanitary enhancement. This year, I had a student tell me that he would rather have an accident than use our main bathrooms within the building. This made me start to question what is going on with our bathrooms. So, at this time, I emailed Susan Moore with the Department of Facilities, and when I reached out to her, I explained that we have the following problems. One, hot water is temperamental. It's, one day it works, the next day it doesn't. Two, the stalls are so small that we have students who cannot fit into the stall. They have to stand on the toilet or behind the toilet to close the door behind them. Three, the bathrooms lack an adequate ventilation system. This means minimal airflow. The bathroom smells like mildew and urine at six a.m. after it's been cleaned the night before, because it's got twenty-two years' worth of use. During the blackout earlier this month, when Glen Lee lost power for nearly three hours, mice thought that it was nighttime, and they were running around the bathroom. It's not the first time I've heard of mice in the building, but it's the first time I've seen them with my own eyes. My students deserve a more sanitary and safe place to use the bathroom. Now, I have to say that Ms. Susan Moore has done an excellent job of responding and acting on this. We've had people in the building this week that have been measuring the ventilation, and they've already made changes to the stalls to make sure that things have been moved so students can fit. And I also have to say that our maintenance and janitorial staff do an excellent job cleaning. They clean it every single night. I see it with my own eyes. But there's only so much you can do when there's no airflow, and you can't leave the doors open all day long for the classrooms to gain the same odor. I want to be sure that even though there's action taking place, that everyone in the school board and everyone in here is aware of these conditions, because as the next capital improvement, financial planning, any type of allocation of funding for this is considered, I want Glen Lee to stay at the forefront of this discussion. Glen Lee was built in nineteen forty-nine, and the most recent renovation was twenty-two years ago in nineteen ninety-eight. This means that the current main hall bathrooms that serve over four hundred children a day have twenty-two years' worth of use and are on a seventy-one-year-old foundation. Several schools that were built in the fifties and sixties are receiving, based on the Henrico County project lists, are receiving million-dollar renovations, and I want to understand what I can do as an educator and as an advocate for my students to make sure that Glen Lee is next on that list. It is difficult for me to accept that the county that grounds my roots, where my family has lived for over a hundred years, owned property businesses, and where I attended school my entire life, and now chose to come back and teach and own a home, are having these circumstances exist for our students. It's unacceptable, and we've got to make a change. So I appreciate your time and attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hornbarger.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members, Dr. Cashwell. My name is Mary Morrissey. This is my thirtieth year teaching middle school for Henrico. Henrico teachers do so much more than teach our content. We work to nurture the whole child. We teach students, our students, to advocate for themselves and speak up for others. However, for years in Henrico, teachers have had the fear of retribution and retaliation instilled in us, to stay quiet when we have a concern, opinion, or want to advocate for ourselves. In December, at a meeting with Dr. Cashwell, we talked about this fear, this fear to lose our jobs, or to be suddenly moved from the school we love, or to lose our retirement benefits. Dr. Cashwell assured us that no teacher should have this fear. During the last school board meeting, a teacher addressed the overwhelming amount of tasks each teacher must do each day. The morale is low, and the burnout is real. This teacher said everything we all want to say, but are too afraid to do so. She said it all, except for one thing. I come to you this evening with no fear, and on behalf of all Henrico teachers, but especially the veterans, many of us have given our entire career to Henrico. As most of the veteran teachers did not see any recognition in the May two thousand and nineteen salary compression adjustment, I stand here now to tell you, you have failed us. You have failed us by examining our salary in a moment of time, the two thousand and seventeen and eighteen school year. You have failed to see that in the thirty years I have worked in Henrico, the salary scale has been restructured many times, so often to make room at the top of the scale. In thirty years, my salary steps have been sacrificed, and now at year thirty, I am paying for that sacrifice. I will never make the money that a current teacher does when I reach the same number of years of service. The large salary gap is evident. This pay gap does not have anything to do with pay grade, or national board certification, or even the unified pay scale. Today, at my thirtieth year, a teacher with three years less service than me only makes one thousand three hundred and sixty-four dollars less than I do. However, a teacher with three years more service than me makes eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars more than I do. The salary gap is evident. If I received a three percent raise each year for the next three years, I would still be behind in my salary by three thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars. The salary gap is real. The Henrico Strategic Plan states recruit, retain, and reward educators. What Henrico has failed to see is that to recruit and retain new teachers, you must show that you value your current teachers. Henrico advertises a twenty-seven-step salary scale, but at year thirty, I am on step twelve. At year thirty, I make less than the minimum advertised salary of sixty-one thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars for the newly advertised, non-college-degreed clerk of the school board position. I ask, how did you let this happen? How will a new teacher want to stay in Henrico, to become a future veteran teacher when they see their mentor struggling on a salary scale with steps they never seem to be able to climb? School board, please hear us.
Thank you so much, Ms. Morrissey. Before you start speaking, Mr. Reeves, next can I have Sarah Cheek Taylor and Savannah Taylor? If you two could come up, please, that'd be greatly appreciated. You can go ahead and start, can I get Ms. Reeves?
All right. Chairman of the board, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell, good evening. My name is John Reeves, and I'm working with the Henrico Education Association, the HEA, and I'm very proud of the work they have done with you all. I am a teacher at Gobin High School, the high school from which I graduated. Recently, one of my students asked me if I thought he should be a teacher. It made me stop and think. "It's a tough gig," I told him. It was hard for me holding back, because the truth is that I do not think my students should be teachers, because I see what teachers have to endure. Teaching is like walking across four lanes of highway, risking everything to dodge cars to help a child. That is what is at the center of this profession. Sometimes, though, when you're trying to reach that kid on the other side of the mad traffic, you get struck by a car. Families move away. Families get their visas denied and move away. Students disappear. Students drop out. Students get kicked out. Students get in fights. Students spray paint hate speech and threats on your walls. At the end of January, my school was locked down because there was a violent threat against our school. The next day, unrelated, a student at our school committed suicide, from which we are still mourning and recovering. I've only been teaching for three years, and I cannot imagine how some of my fellow professionals can endure. They're like levees keeping the floods back. But levees don't hold forever. I was not honest when my student asked me if he should be a teacher. I tried to dissuade him, but I was not honest. Although teaching can be rewarding, and there can be moments to completely fill up your cup, the ocean waves keep slamming into the levees, infinite tasks and dilemmas. I want the best for my students, all of my fellow professional educators do, but teaching easily becomes a relentless and extremely isolating calling. It is not a job that we can clock out from. It is a profession requiring training, continued learning and growth, and utter commitment. Did you know that Virginia teachers are paid eighty-five hundred dollars less than the national average? It sure would be nice to be treated like I was average. All of this is why I could not tell my student that he should be a teacher. My students might not all always earn it, but I think every last one deserves to be treated better than average. I want the best for them. However, Henrico County is not Virginia. I encourage you to see yourselves as I see you, completely committed educators. Your lives, too, are dedicated to our students. I invite you to show the community, the state, and the country that you truly value and appreciate your teachers by treating us like we're at least average. I think it will restore a lot of faith, and it will heal, because teachers will continue to serve, no matter what we are paid, because we don't think of it as a job, or even a profession. We think of it as our identity, as people on this earth. Thank you.
Good afternoon, school board members, faculty and staff. My name is Sarah Cheek Taylor, and I live in the Magnolia Ridge subdivision. I am the proud parent of two Greenwood Elementary School students, Savannah and Sophia Taylor. I am here today to discuss the current redistricting plans. As a mother of two beautiful brown curly-haired girls, it has always been very important for me to raise my kids in a neighborhood that reflects the financial, racial, religious, and cultural diversity that exists on our planet, while also providing them with quality educational experiences. It is very unfortunate that in searching for a home, Magnolia Ridge was one of the few communities with both vast diversity and quality school systems. Teaching our kids to embrace diversity is key to raising open-minded, kind human beings who respect and accept the wonderful uniquenesses that exist in our world. Removing our children from Hungry Creek and Glen Allen High will decrease its current diversity. It is even more important, the kids at these schools are exposed to the uniqueness that our neighborhood provides. Fifteen years from now, these same children will be adults who make decisions to hire, to finance, to create laws, and simply engage people who are different from themselves. I pray that my girls will leave a lasting impression of love and light, breaking down unconscious biases, and creating a world that embraces people from all walks of life. I am here to strongly encourage you to keep our neighborhood and Hungry Creek Middle School and Glen Allen High School for the benefit of our entire Glen Allen community. I also urge you to consider exploring radical and grassroots approaches to improving underperforming schools. Moving kids around from one school to another will not have a positive impact on the individual kids who are falling behind, nor the kids who are doing well in their current schools. So again, I urge you to consider keeping us in our school systems, not just for our children, for the entire Glen Allen community. Thanks for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Before Ms. Taylor begins to speak, can I have Tracy Halem and Anna Miller, please? Tracy Halem? And then Anna Miller? Is Ms. Miller here? Yes, ma'am, you may begin.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thanks for having me today. My name is Savannah Taylor, and I am a fifth grader at Greenwood Elementary School. I live in Magnolia Ridge, and I'm here to speak about the redistricting plans. I have spent the last four years eagerly preparing to attend Hungry Creek Middle School. The friendships that I have developed are very special to me, and I really want to remain with my friends throughout middle and high school. I already consider myself a Cougar and have been a part of the Glen Allen Community events for the past four years. I have drummed in the Glen Allen parades, played basketball in the Hungry Creek gym, and am excited about my upcoming classes that start in fall at Hungry Creek. I am here to promote keeping our neighborhood in Hungry Creek Middle and Glen Allen High School. We are vital, we are a vital part of Glen Allen community, and it's very important that our village of support stays together. Thank you for your time. Go Gators, go Cougars, go Jaguars.
Before you speak, Ms. Miller, I'm assuming you're not here. Next, can I get Ms. Leslie Harris and Chase Hendricks? Leslie Harris, Chase Hendricks, thank you so much. You may begin, madam.
Good evening, Mr. Dr. Cashwell, Chairman Reverend Cooper, and school board representatives. My name is Tracy Halem, and I currently live in the Crestview Elementary, sorry, Tuckahoe Middle School in Freeman District. I have a son in ninth grade at Freeman, and I have a daughter in seventh grade at Tuckahoe Middle. She will be affected by the redistricting of our division. Crestview area is the most eastern portion of Henrico's west end, south of Broad Street. It's primarily is the neighborhoods that border Monument Avenue and Willa Lawn Drive, the shopping center, to pass to Glenside Avenue, Horse Pen, and Three Chop. It encompasses St. Mary's Hospital, Weinstein JCC, and countless Asian and Latino supermarkets and restaurants. It is an area that is considered urban, with smaller residents and real estate compared to homes to the west. Now, for my story, just over five years ago, I lived in the Tuckahoe Elementary District, just south of Patterson Avenue. We moved there before we started our family, and we lived there for about fifteen years. We created our family through adoption, and as a result, both of my children are a different race than myself and their father. My son is African-American Caucasian. My daughter is Vietnamese. When we went to put my son in elementary school in two thousand and ten, we went to Tuckahoe Elementary. We toured, we talked to people. We also got diversity statistics from the school board at that time. At that time, Tuckahoe Elementary was at five percent non-Caucasian, which was, we couldn't put our children in that school. We wanted them to be in a school that people looked like them, or they weren't the only ones that were different. So we looked around, and we looked to Crestview Elementary. Crestview was just east of Tuckahoe Elementary. We, at the time, could not move, but we got a variance, and our children went to the school for at least four years through that variance. About four years ago, we moved into the school district, and now I live in a cul-de-sac where there are seven houses. Of those seven houses, there are three houses that are Vietnamese immigrants in our neighborhood and my transracial family in this one cul-de-sac. In our neighborhood, there is racial diversity, but it's more truly about cultural diversity, and it was on this slideshow for the international dinner at Crestview. There are many first-generation immigrants where English is not their first language. Unfortunately, they are not the people that are coming to the school boards to talk or into the meetings. Although racial and cultural diversity is not a goal in the redistricting process, reducing concentrations of poverty is one of those goals. Crestview has forty-five percent economically disadvantaged households that qualify for reduced and free lunches. Tucker has forty-six percent economically disadvantaged. Moving Crestview to Tucker will increase their economically disadvantaged population and, at the same time, reduce Freeman's thirty-one percent. I'm not going to finish, because I'm over time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Dr. Cashwell, Chairman Reverend Cooper, and the rest of the board. My name is Leslie Harris, and like my predecessor here, I'm here to speak on behalf of keeping Crestview at Tuckahoe and at Freeman. Since she spoke already about the lack of diversity, or rather, the excess of diversity that we have at Crestview, and the impact that moving us out of Freeman would have on Tucker, I'm going to go ahead and just blow by that. Another issue that we have as a group is safety. When you look at our community, Freeman is the near west end school, and that's where we live. The routes to get to Tucker from our neighborhood pose significantly increased safety risks. The most efficient route is along I-64, which had a three hundred and fifty percent higher rate of crashes in two thousand and nineteen than just going to Freeman. If you bypass the interstate and illogically pass Freeman to go further to get to Tucker from our neighborhood, the accident rate was still three times higher than just simply going to Freeman. Speaking to the goal of ensuring contiguous geographic zones and community components, as well as continuity of the K-12 process, that's the heart of why we want to stay at Freeman. Freeman is the near west end school. We are on the farthest edge of the near west end. Literally, the city line runs through my backyard. I pay property taxes in both the city of Richmond and Henrico. My house is in Henrico, last twenty feet of my backyard are city. The community between Tuckahoe Middle and Freeman runs deep because of their proximity to each other. And during the middle school years, the students are already building relationships with Freeman through sports, band, and other activities, where Freeman staff and students are mentors and coaches. For my middle son, it was through band. The amazing directors at Tuckahoe and Freeman have a strong working relationship. The students at TMS all know Mr. B., who visits regularly from Freeman, and each year they visit one Friday night to play alongside the Freeman Band in the stands at a football game. As eighth graders, they can audition to be full members of the award-winning Marching Rebels. They rehearse several mornings a week before school, then walk over to Tuckahoe to attend classes, and on Friday afternoons, they walk back to Freeman after school to eat dinner with their friends at the high school and do that evening's performance. Band is a major life commitment for these kids. It's their team. It's their tribe. They work together hard all season long. The sense of belonging that creates for students before they even enroll in high school is priceless. My current sixth grader at Tuckahoe has been supporting the Freeman Band as a volunteer, hauling equipment for three years now, and he is eagerly looking forward to taking his place with his French horn in just a few years. This isn't possible between Tuckahoe and Tucker. Tucker has not been receptive to Tuckahoe's requests to get involved. Their band also practices after school, so walking isn't an option. Thank you very much for considering our points of view. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Before you start speaking, Kevin White and Melanie Stout, if you'd be happy to come Kevin White? Thank you, Mr. White. You may begin, sir.
Hi, Dr. Cashwell, Chairman Reverend Cooper, and school board representatives. My name is Chase Hendricks from the Crestview area, and I am a sophomore at Freeman High School. I went to Crestview Elementary and Tuckahoe Middle School. When I was in the seventh grade, my band class was invited to play with the marching band at Freeman High School. We got to march with them at a Friday football night game. It was great. I learned, when I learned I could be part of the marching band as an eighth grader, I wanted to. It was great practicing at the high school every morning before school started. There were other Tuckahoe kids there, too. It was great that the eighth graders could walk to school after rehearsal and walk to football games. On game day Fridays, after middle school let out, the eighth graders were able to walk to the high school and get ready for the game. Some kids wouldn't, have never been able to do that if the middle school wasn't right down the street. I also got many tours from the upperclassmen around Freeman, so that by the time I was in high school, I was able to get to my classes easier, because I had already knew the layout of the school. I hope you will choose to keep Crestview at Freeman, so that other students can, other students there can experience what I did. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Dr. Cashwell, Chairman Reverend Cooper, and school representatives. My name is Kevin White, and I live in the Crestview neighborhood and here to speak about redistricting. I'll first start by thanking you all for what you do. I'm sure it's a thankless job most days, so I appreciate that from me. This process has brought out a lot of concerned parents, obviously, as I think any county would hope for. I think what we all bring to this conversation is emotion and passion, and I think those things are to be expected. But what I would say, that your job is a little different, and your job is to base your decision on facts and kind of lead the emotion and passion to us. We all have our own point of views and the reasons for that. Because this is a well-thought-out process with very clear goals and objectives. So I think the key is to focus on those goals and objectives when you make your decision. Every email that comes out from Henrico County Public Schools talks about and reminds us that this process is to address school overcrowding and plan for population growth. E4 directly addresses that objective. It helps the Crestview neighborhood stay at a school It helps the Crestview neighborhood stay at a school, one of those schools is overcrowded right now, in an area that has been raised before, has very little growth left. We are, there are no major areas that would be there for growth or development in the future. So it immediately addresses that issue. D4 puts Godwin at 99% overcrow, 99% capacity with, which is really one of the reasons we're in this process to begin with. Also, in this process, one of the goals of redistricting has been to reduce the concentrations of poverty while balancing a community and neighborhood concept. E4 accomplishes its goal. This is really straight math and has been mentioned before. The, I wanted to end with just a personal story. The facts are the facts, but I also think community matters. This summer, I was with my daughter that was entering high school and a pretty nervous time for parents, obviously, that's a pretty stressful time for kids to enter. We went to Starbucks, it was late August, about a week before school, and we ran into a kid in the Starbucks that I didn't know and she was happy to see my daughter and they connected and she said, "Look, you're going to Freeman, right?" And she said, "Yeah, I am." And so she said, "If you ever need anything, just find me and I'll help you out." We left and I asked Catherine who that was and she said, "Oh, she's from my West Hampton Day School," which is my preschool that she went to, that she hadn't, it's an after-school program as well, so she hadn't seen her in a while. So to me, that's community, those connections matter and the facts matter. So I encourage you to focus on the objectives that was laid out in this process and no outside factors when you make a decision. Thank you.
Before you begin, Ms. Stout, if you'd give me a moment. Next, I want to bring up Gina Blackwell, Gina Blackwell and Sean Winterhalter. Gina Blackwell, Sean Winterhalter.
Winterhalter is our scratch.
Thank you, sir. Next, can I have Larissa Rodriguez, Larissa Rodriguez? Come on up, Ms. Rodriguez. Yes, ma'am, you may begin. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Cashwell, Chairman Reverend Cooper and School Board Representatives. I'm Melanie Stout and parent of two Henrico students. I also live in the Crestview Elementary School District. Current zoning is Crestview, Tuckahoe Middle and Freeman. My daughters currently attend Tuckahoe Middle and Freeman. And I'd like to focus on maintaining the community relationships that my children and families have built as well as continuing their respective school programs that have strong relationships between Tuckahoe Middle and Freeman. As several others have already mentioned, there is a strong relationship that exists with the Tuckahoe Middle School Band as well as Freeman High School Band, so I will not review that, but just emphasize that the proximity of the schools enables the children to walk over from Freeman in the morning to Tuckahoe so that that program can be strengthened. My ninth-grade daughter is in the Freeman Treble Alliance Chorus Group and has participated in a Pyramid Concert each year, which includes Tuckahoe Middle School Chorus students, Crestview Elementary students and Freeman. Again, the chorus instructors at Crestview, Tuckahoe Middle and Freeman have established a relationship to provide continuity from elementary to middle to high school for our children. If we're rezoned to Tucker High School, these relationships and unique opportunities for musical development and consistent relationships into high school will not exist. Students will not be able to walk over to school from Tucker to, from Tucker to Tuckahoe Middle, which enables many students to participate in these unique and exceptional opportunities. I also would like to add that I recognize the importance of increasing resources of our disadvantaged Henrico schools as well as the benefit of our children from having the opportunity to attend more diverse school. Most of what you hear us talk about today is a privilege that all children deserve. I hope the school board is brave enough to make the right decision to help our underprivileged schools and challenge those of us that have privilege to accept the opportunity and responsibility to be part of the change that is needed for our county. And I really want to thank the teachers that were brave to talk about yet another important way to help our disadvantaged students by having quality teachers deserve the salary increases. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gina Blackwell and I live in the River Mill neighborhood. I'm here tonight to talk about redistricting. As you are aware, the neighborhoods of River Mill, Greenwood Glen and Magnolia Ridge are all moving from Hungry Creek Middle and Glen Allen High School to Brooklyn Middle and Hermitage High. Our neighborhoods have been vocal on the redistricting website, at the public walks and every month here. However, our voices have either not been heard or have been ignored. Not a single map option keeps our neighborhood in their current schools. Intentional or not, it feels like the entire redistricting committee is against us. Our neighborhoods voice concerns, other neighborhoods voice concerns, new maps were created that address their concerns. Why are their neighborhoods' concerns being met but not ours? My husband and I work in public service and we were happy to find the right neighborhood and the right schools for our kids. We just moved in a few months ago and we don't want to have to move again, so please let us stay. Thank you.
Ms. Rodriguez, before you begin, next can I have Ashley Lewis and Tracy Leganki, Tracy Leganki. If Ms. Leganki is not here, next we'll have Heather Walker, Heather Walker. You may begin, madam.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Dr. Cashwell, Reverend Cooper and members of the school board. Larissa Rodriguez here again, current Verona District resident, future Fairfield District resident. This month, other than the school board meeting, I was only able to observe the joint committee meeting on February 6th and I'm standing here again with, to express the same concerns. After last month's school board meeting, the very next day, a group called Equitable Advocates posted and referenced an article from the RICO Citizen describing the overcrowding in our schools at the middle school level. The post read, "This is why we need redistricting. Portions of this county have been overcapacity for more than a decade. Class sizes affect everything from student performances to student workload. Important to keep in mind, as you argue against plans that move large amounts of students, the primary reason for redistricting is to address overcrowding and you can't do that without moving people or adding capacity and the availability to add capacity in the short term is limited. We need to find the option that is best for the whole county, not just what's good for the individual." I sat here for two hours the day before that post was made and listened to 30-something parents from across the county collectively expressed the exact same message. It was a unified voice saying, "No, we don't want this." Not an individual's agenda, as implied by the post. Secondly, to present redistricting as a short-term solution that requires moving large amounts of students is alarming. Redistricting should never be viewed as a short-term solution as if to imply that it's easily done as shuffling a deck of cards. We're talking about children's, families, communities that have developed decades-long relationships. I'll now redirect the focus once again on River Mill because that's my future community and I feel we have been over-discussed and underrepresented throughout the process. I'm tired of being publicly vilified as if we don't have a right to want to stay in our currently districted school zone, as if we're wrong for doing exactly what every other responsible parent does before they move or build a home in a neighborhood. We looked at the schools. My husband and I researched River Mill since 2016. We budgeted and saved to build our new home there. Again, Magnolia Ridge, Greenwood Glen and River Mill still have no presented option to stay except for Option Z. Again, the committee got heated and upset over the mere prospect of presenting an option to have a stay. We signed our contract in 2019 and our home isn't due to be completed until spring of 2021. Anyway, I see my time is about to run out, so I just want to start with, end with, I know the existing River Mill, Greenwood Glen and Magnolia Ridge neighbors I've met represent a beautiful array of nationalities and cultures that in my humble opinion should be considered as an exemplar to the rest of the county.
Good evening. My name is Ashley Lewis and I live in River Mill. I'm sure you're all familiar with me as I've spoken at each meeting since we first saw the first set of proposed maps that were made public. I remain concerned about my communities and surrounding areas, which are Magnolia Ridge and Greenwood Glen. To date, there have been zero proposed maps that keep us in our current schools. While that may be what some want, it's not what the residents of this area want. In past speeches, I have expressed great concern about the bias from multiple people who have a say in this decision. That concern remains. The conversations and negative remarks made about my community are unacceptable. It is clear that some members are on the committee for their own personal biases. Thankfully, that decision will be in your hands because otherwise, I would feel like we don't stand a chance. We've all heard of Option Z now. I support it because it impacts the least amount of students countywide in addition to it better aligning with the county's set goals for the purpose of this redistricting. A complete Option Z for elementary school, middle school and high school is going to be made available by Monday. I am trying to refrain from showing my frustration with this process, but as it continues, it does become more difficult. I'd like to thank Reverend Cooper for requesting for our communities to be considered in the last committee meeting, although it was completely and blatantly disregarded. We are thankful that we will be represented through you, Reverend Cooper. Thank you for your continued supports for your constituents. Thank you.
Before you start speaking, Ms. Walker, come on up, you can come up. Can I have Kayden Walker? Okay. All right. What about Alana Castle? Alana? Thank you, Ms. Castle. And next, Donna Bowen. Donna Bowen, thank you so much. You may begin.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Cashwell and members of the school board. My name is Heather Walker. I'm the mother of two awesome boys who go to Greenwood Elementary School, one of whom will be speaking right after me, and I have been teaching in public schools for 21 years. There have been comments made at committee meetings that deeply concern me as an educator. At the most recent combined meeting, a member asked, "Would you prefer a low student-teacher ratio for a better education or would you prefer to keep relationships together?" Great support was given by other members that student-teacher ratio was more important. I am here to state what I know to be true after many years of teaching, which has included specialized training in child development. Relationships are part of education. A great education system honors and nurtures those relationships together with instruction. As members of the school board, I believe that you are also familiar with the extensive research regarding social-emotional learning and you expect Henrico schools to support the learning of the whole child. I realize that citizens who are not educators do not know the importance of this for brain development, so it is up to me to point it out and it is up to you to make the expectation crystal clear to Cropper and to the committee members. The non-family members closest to us are some of the most important people in our lives. They lift us up when we need it and tell it to us straight when it's required. We learn to make those connections at school. Students find their network of support to lean on when they are nervous, frustrated or even just want to celebrate. The statement was made at a committee meeting that "My kids aren't even still friends with the kids they knew in elementary school." Okay, while that could be the case, just because they may not have had the same friends or support system when they're 11 as they do when they're 18 or 30 doesn't make them any less important for each stage of life along the way. As students grow, they gain more emotional independence from their parents and their support system of friends is what carries them, just as it does for us as adults. Please reinforce your expectation to maintain the feeder patterns as much as possible for the sake of the social-emotional development of these kids. Numbers are not everything. As for my mom role, I ask that you continue to support maintaining the feeder pattern of Greenwood Elementary, Hungry Creek and Glen Allen High School. These schools are absolutely intertwined. The passage from one level to the next is smooth because the principals and teachers work so hard to be inclusive and connected. My son Kayden will give you examples as he feels very strongly about staying with his school family. Mine is based on research on what's best for kids. His is based on his personal experience and his awesome heart. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Good evening. My name is Kayden Walker and I am in, I am a fourth grader at Greenwood Elementary School. I live at Greenwood Glen subdivision. I have no experience with this, but from my mom's speeches, I can tell that it's very important, so I want to be involved. The main reason that I want to stay in Greenwood Elementary, Hungry Creek and Glen Allen High School is because students from those schools have come to my school and have told me they are great. On some Mondays, we have students from Glen Allen Drum Line, some sports teams, come to cheer us on when we start our week. Students from Glen Allen help us with our classrooms and field days. Hungry Creek kids work together with kids at our school to do projects. This makes me smile when they are here and I want to do that for students who are younger than me when I get bigger. My school has a system like Harry Potter houses. This makes it so that I spend with kids who aren't in my class or even in my grade. On some Mondays, we do resource with our houses instead of just with our class, so I know more fourth graders than just the ones I see every day. I am a, I am in House Gratos for gratefulness. For pep rallies, we sit with our house, so I sit with students from kindergarten through first, I mean through fifth. My brother is in kindergarten this year and he's in House Gratos, too. I get to cheer on kids that I wouldn't see if I didn't know or have the house system. I will, I will know seventh and eighth graders when I go to Hungry Creek because of my Gratos house family. It makes me feel more confident about changing schools. I want to be able to do that when I, when for kids when I'm younger than me. When I get older, too, I will be in high school when my brother goes to sixth. I want him to feel happy and confident when he starts middle school, even if I'm not there with him. It is important to me that I get to stay with my school family. I help, I learn leadership, how to be an upstander and how to help others and more. It helps me be a good person. I want to be with those people when I go to middle school and high school. So that I can still be the mess me I can be. Thank you for letting me speak to you tonight.
Before you begin, can I have Aiden Shelton and George Tobin? Aiden Shelton, George Tobin? Madam?
Good evening, Dr. Cashwell, Chairman Reverend Cooper and School Board members. I'm Alina Castle, resident of the Charles Glen neighborhood in the Crestview area. We are zoned for Crestview Elementary, Tuckahoe Middle and Freeman High. I have a six-year-old daughter in kindergarten at Crestview and a two-year-old son. My son's birthday is today. While I should be at home celebrating with my family, I felt it necessary to be here to support my community regarding the proposed redistricting from Freeman to Tucker. First, thank you, board members, for commenting on the redistricting process during the meeting on the 13th. It was reassuring to hear that our concerns are being heard and taken seriously. I've had serious concerns regarding the redistricting process and more so after attending the joint committee meeting last week. In the interest of time, I'll stick to why we want to remain at Freeman instead of moving to Tucker as proposed in Option D4. Safety, which my other neighbors have commented on, but just simply stated, our teenagers don't need to be on the interstate. My understanding is that the last time our area was up for redistricting, the reason why we were not moved to Tucker was safety. Traffic is still a concern, 10 years later, it's gotten worse. Second, one of the goals of redistricting is the, to reduce the concentrations of poverty. Moving Crestview to Tucker would just increase that. Third, our area, there is no room for growth or very little. In the Crestview area, it's a near-West End community. It's an older, more established area. There's little opportunity for building houses, maybe one or two at the most. Out there, there's currently a large freshman class at Freeman. The data provided to the community, excuse me, the committee, shows that enrollment at Freeman is trending down. This leads us to question, is it even necessary to move us out of Freeman for the long term? Importantly, relationships and community, they seem to be on the low Importantly, relationships and community, they seem to be on the low list of priorities for the committee. And continuity of our children's progress from K through 12 is extremely important to us. My daughter attends West Hampton Day School, and she has been there since she's three. She goes there for after-school care. And she, like a majority of the members in our community, we're just a tight-knit group, and we worship together, play sports together, and socialize. So we just want to keep those relationships going. There's a relationship between Crestview, Tuckahoe, and Freeman. Those are fostered early, and we want those to continue. So please support any option or E for any future map iteration that keeps us at Freeman. Please keep our children safe and together. Thank you for your time and service to our county.
My name is Donna Bowen. I'm a landscape architect and planner by profession. I live in the Monumental Floral Gardens neighborhood, and I'm here to talk about redistricting in support of keeping our neighborhood in the Crestview, Tuckahoe, and Freeman pattern. I have a daughter who's a freshman at Freeman right now, and a son who graduated in 2019. He's a freshman at Virginia Tech. So I just want to let you know, first of all, thank you. Thank you for all your difficult, the tasks that are so difficult, and you guys sticking to it. And I want you to know that I appreciate your hard work, time, and consideration for all of these people, for everyone here speaking. I will point out that I support the others that have spoken with regard to how much we appreciate and nourish our diversity in our schools, and I want to protect the value of our kids' safety. While we agree all kids' lives are sacred, we are not going to condone liberally exposing our neighborhood's kids to more risk than they have now. What I'm here to talk about most is legacy, curriculum, and hardship. Why am I here? I have a daughter who's going to be grandfathered and a son who is in college. I'm here because of the legacy. The legacy that was given to me by my predecessors, the families, the children, and parents that came before me and created the curriculums and the trends and the support system that our schools have. I'm here because neighbors are helping neighbors. I have a wonderful neighborhood, and I could not not be here and let them down. My neighborhood is a type of neighborhood, you walk into, you walk dogs, and everybody's gonna tell you where to get your dog trained, and everybody's gonna tell you where to get your, which dogs are friendly, which ones can play with children. Y'all well better believe they're gonna tell me about what to expect when my kids are born and what to expect with schools, how to, the standards that they've carved in their years in experience with schools. We received these gifts from our predecessors, and we would like to give these gifts to our following students in our neighborhood. We expect that these parents will be looking out for sports and curriculum and colleges. The curriculum that are put into place right now are prepared for colleges. It takes decades to create the curriculums that a neighborhood would like to instill in the values that they have. To move our kids to another school, it would take, it would be a hardship on them to, in order to facilitate the growth that would be required, that they would need to, sorry, they would need to create the systems that they have in place now. Thank you very much. Three minutes is not very long.
Good evening, Dr. Cashwell, Chairman Reverend Cooper, and school board members. My name is George Otto Tobin, and I am an eighth grader at Tuckahoe Middle School by way of Crestview Elementary. And I am here to talk about why I support Option E for redistricting. Three extracurricular activities that I participate in are tied to the larger Tuckahoe-Freeman community. The first of which is track. I run spring track at TMS and winter track at Freeman, and this is made possible by me being able to walk over after school every day to run with the high schoolers, which conditions me a lot better for spring track, making me a better athlete, which is something I greatly appreciate. Mountain biking is a huge part of my life after school. I ride for the Henrico Composite Mountain Biking Team. Several of my teammates and some of my best friends go to Freeman, and if I was able to go to Freeman with them, we would have the minimum we need to start a team at Freeman High School. Band, I play several instruments at the band at Tuckahoe Middle School, and Mr. Jackson and Mr. Blankenship coordinate opportunities for students at TMS to play with Freeman students, to hone their musical talents and become better musicians. Because I know both of them, when I was deciding on my electives for next year, I felt comfortable reaching out to Mr. Jackson and Mr. Blankenship before making my decision on what I was going to do next year as a high school band musician. In closing, the close proximity to Freeman makes it possible for me and other Tuckahoe students to take advantage of these opportunities and more without having to ride a bus or ask our parents. I feel strongly that student voice has to be considered as part of the redistricting process. The stakes feel very high and very real for me and many of my friends. Please make a decision that will protect the relationships that we have made and preserve our sense of community. The course of my life is in your hands. Thank you for the opportunity to share my experiences as a student at the Henrico County Public School System.
Aiden, before you start speaking, give me one second if you could. Can I have Kyra McKenzie, Tiffany, and my angel? That's three people, four people together. Now, one of y'all can only speak unless a minute apiece. Come on up. Next, can I have Keith Lipper? Keith Lipper? Mr. Lipper? Keith Lipper? Next, can I have Nikki Stevenson? Come on up. Madam, if you come then, you can take her a spot. Thank you, sir. All of Mayberry. What about Sandra Hamilton? Sandra, come on, Ms. Hamilton. Thank you so much. Okay, Aiden, it's on you.
Good evening. My name is Edan Sheldon. I'm a fifth grader at Greenwood Elementary, and I live in Greenwood Glen. This redistricting will move me from Hungry Creek Middle School to Brooklyn Middle School when I enter seventh grade. I would have already started middle school at Hungry Creek. My friends and I would have just started to get used to Hungry Creek Middle School. Then we would need to start all over again at a different middle school. I do not think this is fair to me and my friends. In most of these options, you will be splitting up a small percentage of my school, let alone my grade. In Option D for, the plans have us staying at Hungry Creek Middle School and Glen Allen High School, but our neighbors, Magnolia Ridge and River Mill, will be redistricted. We don't want our community split. People who have known each other for a long time and have always been in the same schools together are being pushed away from our schools. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Good evening, Dr. Cashwell and Chairman Reverend Cooper. My name is Mackenzie Nelson. I attend John Rolfe Middle School, and I am 12 years old and in seventh grade.
Good evening. My name is Kyra Lambert. I am 13, and I attend John Rolfe Middle School, and I am in the seventh grade.
Good evening. My name is Tiffany Tyles. I am 12 years old. I attend John Rolfe Middle School, and I'm in seventh grade.
Good evening. My name is Maggie Kenner. I attend John Rolfe Middle School. I am 13 years old and in seventh grade.
Today, we are here to request a change for our school mascot. Recently, we came across an article entitled, "Ending the Harmful Stereotypes of Native People," and this lists reasons why we think having a Native American as a mascot is harmful.
In this article, they say, "NCAI has long held a clear position against derogatory and harmful stereotypes of Native people, including sports mascots in media and popular cultures. NCAI lodged a campaign to address stereotypes of Native people in the popular culture and media, as well as in sports."
We need to end the harm of harmful Indian mascots in sports. John Rolfe Middle School has an Indian as our school mascot. I was reading and researching about our mascot, and this is why we are trying to change it. If you are willing to help us change it, the variety of mascots we came up with, either symbolize a J for John or R for Rolfe, it symbolize a great future of success. These are the names that we came up with. Dream catchers with two I's in them for vision of success. Jaguars, Jets, Reptiles, Riders, the Warriors, not the Native American Warriors, because there are plenty of other Warriors type.
I get most of our Floris jerseys and et cetera has Indians. If you give us a proposed budget by the end of 2020, we will try really hard to raise the money. We also know this process isn't going to be easy or quick. We get we are going to the eighth grade. People say we are going to be out of here quicker than we think. We are willing to do everything in our power to change our mascot.
This doesn't mean we are not going to fight for what's right. If you think about it, if a Caucasian, African-American, or Asian person were being used as a mascot, do you feel that would be offensive? No person or group of people should be used as a mascot for anything.
No matter what grade I'm in, I will still fight what I think is right. I think me and my friends are doing a good deal to tend to change the school mascot.
We did all our research and actually found out that the school name is John Rolfe because the actual John Rolfe land was on the property at our school. So we ask if you can please consider.
Thank you for having the time out of the day to listen to our issues, and have a great night. And it will give us great pleasure if you then over our thoughts. Then over our thoughts.
Thank you so much, all of you. We also want to recognize Reverend Tyrone Nelson, who's walking really fast down the aisle from the Henrico Board of Supervisors. Give him a hand for our Board of Supervisors, Reverend Nelson. Thank you so much, ladies. We hear you loud and clear. Madam? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Cassie Wolf, and I am representing all of Mayberry Elementary tonight, which I think is a good thing for time. Their performance due to the snow last week is, well, no, they're all there watching their kids perform. It was scheduled for last week, and now it's tonight. So I'm taking one for the team. So we have not been a part of this process. Mainly, we've just been on the periphery, ensuring, kind of keeping track of Map A to B to C to D until Map E became public, I think exactly a month ago tonight. And there were texts, everyone was kind of discussing, I think there's some changes to our school, we should look at it, which, Mayberry is game four, but when we started looking at the maps, this was not a move for us. We're being divided. And the further that we looked into this, it became unfathomable. When you looked at Map D versus Map E, the differences in what happens across the county. We've talked all night tonight about community and how important it is. It's the number one reason all of us are standing here. What is important is that we can keep communities together as long as possible. So let me put this into perspective. Currently, there are 15 elementary schools in the county that are divided when they go into middle school. So they're split in half, in some cases, more than half. In Map D four, it fixes 11 of those divides. It further moves to fix some of the triple splits in middle school, although the middle schools are still obviously divided into high schools. Map E four goes back to splitting 15 elementary schools. It fixes six, but in turn divides newly six elementary schools that have been together all of the history of the schools. And so for us, the panic set in, not just because no elementary school should be divided, if possible, but because of where we are geographically located in the county. So Mayberry Elementary School is the bottom western part of the county. Our neighborhoods hit Goochlin County. The river is our south border. When we spoke to committee members about kind of why this happened, how can you just divide an elementary school? They said, "Well, we did use Gaskin's Road. We cut down the middle, and now you can fit all into Pump. You got half the school that's gonna go to Kuyakason and Godwin, the other half's gonna continue Tuckahoe-Freeman." There is a swamp that sits north of these neighborhoods. There is no connection between us and Pump Road and Godwin. We have to come out around through the neighborhood we've been divided from, back to Patterson, down along to get to Pump. So you're cutting half of a school. You're leaving us in a little island with no one to attach ourselves to. We spent a lot of time in this last month, I'm gonna use Nikki's time, looking at this process. We have attended every one of the redistricting committee meetings. We have made sure that we understand how we got to this point. What we have discovered is that the process is the problem.
Nikki's time is up a little bit.
Pardon?
Her time is up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm also signed up to speak. So I was gonna speak for both.
Okay, so tell me your name.
I'm sorry. Cassie Wolf. Again, thank you, Ms. Wolf. I'm so sorry.
All right.
First time. But so what we heard the committee members in the last meeting were devastating to us as well.
Well, we kind of can't let the same person speak for eight minutes. Kind of can't do that.
I'm sorry. When you said earlier, yield time, the only reason we did this was because you asked if you could yield to someone or to the committee, so we assumed that's what it meant.
Right, it meant, but one person with four minutes will speak for the group, not take consecutive times. That's...
Oh, so we've listened to all of these people say the same thing, and we could have been saying it multiple times as well. But I can't say more.
Okay, if you could just, I'm wrapped up. I'm one out here. We don't...
Sure, absolutely. I think what, from our perspective, we're ready for change. We are willing to move as needed as a group, supporting Map D four. We've made changes that actually solve all of the problems of the divided communities where you're splitting up neighborhoods and elementary schools. We've solved for them. The consulting-driven committee is unable to make these decisions because it is divided by elementary and secondary. They're not looking at the maps together. They're mutually exclusive decisions, thumbs up, thumbs down. We solved it in two hours after the last committee meeting, where the rest of the committee had to sit back and say, who are we supposed to listen to? The school board's new demands that we care about the communities, or the original variables that they had us look at? It was not hard to do. We're concerned about the process.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm joined by my colleague, Vicki Oliver, a former systems engineer and ten-and-a-half year veteran teacher. My name is Sandra Hamilton, and I've been an elementary school teacher here in Henrico for the past ten-and-a-half years. Prior to teaching, I worked as a CPA for 14 years, and I was blessed to spend five years as a stay-at-home mom. When it was time to re-enter the workforce, I decided to go back to school to realize a childhood dream, to become a teacher. I was never naive enough to think that teaching would be an easy job or that it would make me independently wealthy. What I did not count on, however, was that I would end up with a job that gets more demanding with each passing year, a job that consumes almost every waking moment, a job that takes money out of my wallet, a job that does not reward a job well done. To say that I feel overworked and underpaid is an understatement. It is imperative that you hear and understand that your teachers need help, particularly as it relates to compensation. Having worked in the business world, I understand that numbers and data drive your decision-making process. So I'm here tonight to share with you some numbers and data. This is how much I have spent in my classroom over the past 10 years. I purchased supplies for science experiments, manipulatives for math lessons, books to support literacy. Best practice dictates that teachers maintain classroom libraries with hundreds of books. In my classroom library of $1,234, Henrico County has provided me with exactly seven. Professional athletes who make millions of dollars to throw, catch, shoot, or hit balls do not... do not have to provide their own supplies. Neither do doctors, lawyers, or corporate executives, but teachers do? $10,233. Over 10 years, that's how much my salary has increased in pre-tax dollars. After taxes, that amounts probably around $8,000. My increases have only covered about one-third of my expenses. Zero. This represents how much my pay has increased due to merit. I've received repeated exemplary ratings, meaning I go above and beyond what is required, yet I receive nothing to go along with them. Zero also represents the amount I received as a compression adjustment last year, despite a graphic showing I was in a two-step gap between the old scale and re-established scale. $300. When a 10-year veteran makes just $3,973 more than a recent college graduate, that equates to approximately $300 per year after tax. This is how much the county values a year of my teaching service. To put this in perspective, are you aware that the local McDonald's values a year of my service more than Henrico? I can take this teacher appreciation key tag and receive a free drink every single day for one year. Estimated value, $398. In closing. Teachers work every day to uphold Henrico's core values, where every student has the right to achieve and the support to succeed. I ask you, board members, don't your teachers deserve the same? Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hamilton. Can we have Merle James? Merle James? Katie Botha? Katie Botha? One more time, Katie Botha? All right, no, no Katie Botha? What about John Bristow? John Bristow? And then lastly, Carla Struthers. Ms. Struthers, Carla Struthers? Come on up, Ms. Struthers. You may begin, madam. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Cashwell, school board members. My name is Merle James, and I teach art at Echo Lake Elementary School. I've spent my entire 29-year career in Henrico County schools. I have won elementary, middle, and high school art teacher of the year. I was a finalist for Henrico County Teacher of the Year. I'm an REB winner and, and also an Henrico 21 Award winner. I'm a master teacher, and I'm a master leader. I have never expressed concerns about my salary until last spring, when I did not receive a compression adjustment, and I just could not believe it. It was at this point I began to investigate, for the past nine months, along with other teachers in the county, what was going on. I've spent hours and hours trying to make sense of why, at year 29, I am on step 12, making $58,000. I'm not even halfway up the scale that is 27 steps. Now, 13 years ago, in 2006 and '07, a teacher with the same degree and years of service at a lower pay grade made $755 more than I currently make. Today, I'm on pay grade 28. 13 years ago, pay grade 28 salary was $3,619 more than I make today. 13 years ago, a teacher didn't have to pay 5% into their salary into the VRS. 13 years ago, the cost of healthcare, college education for our children, and the cost of living was lower. 13 years ago, a teacher retiring with 30 years of service is better off than a 30-year veteran is today. In 2020, we are further in the salary hole than the teachers that came before us. Now, I know what you're thinking, it's all because of the Great Recession. Then you ask yourself, are you making more money today than the person that had your job did 13 years ago? I'm not. I'm not. The problem is not the unified pay plan, but the teacher salary step system. It's created an unfair and unequal level of compensation. Teachers with only a few years ahead of me will be able to retire at a level of compensation that I'll never be able to achieve. You know, every teacher goes into the profession to help others, but not at the expense of their own financial well-being. The teachers of Henrico County, county employees, are asking this elected school board to deliver sensitivity, integrity, and credible, and be credible to our financial needs. In closing, I love my job so much. I love my students. And school board members, I am the heart of Henrico County Public Schools. But you know what? I need you to hear what I'm saying right now, because you have got to show a way to help us, especially the veteran teachers in the salary gap. Please support us. I know you have the ability, and I want you to make the commitment, please. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Bristow. I have a daughter at Tuckahoe Elementary, Tuckahoe Middle School that could be impacted by redistricting. But I'm here to ask tonight that the board consider extending the grandfathering rule by one year for high school students. It's my understanding on the current proposal, that the lev- rising 11th and 12th graders will be allowed to finish high school where they start, where they are currently zoned. I'm asking for this rule to be extended by one year to rising 10th graders. By adding just one year to the grandfathering provision, will allow all students to finish high school where they start. For several reasons, I suggest that rising 10th graders should be included in the grandfathering. Number one, academic. Transition to high school can be stressful. Academically, it's more difficult than middle school. Additionally, many students struggle socially with the transition from middle school to high school. This stress negatively, can negatively impact academic performance. These same students are competing for college placement, scholarships, internships, and other opportunities in which high school academics' performance is, is a criteria. Forcing these students to change high schools puts them at a competitive disadvantage to their peers. A 2015 policy brief by the National Education Policy Center states, "The existing research evidence suggests that student mobility in general leads to negative impacts on students", and recommends that families and school officials reduce unnecessary mobility. I suggest that this is a chance to reduce unnecessary mobility. Timing. For the current 8th graders, the maps are still coming out. Some of these 8th graders are just now learning they may be impacted by rezoning. They didn't have a chance to make other arrangements for their high school. For example, they could have applied to a specialty center at the high school where they're currently zoned. It's a gradual problem, we should have a gradual solution. The result, the, the, the overcapacity issues have happened over time, the solution should happen over time as well. And I believe that Henrico has the capacity to do this. Currently, Freeman is one of the most overcapacity, capacity schools in the county. If you allow the 10th graders to stay at that school, it stays at capacity and then drops below capacity the next year. So we never, even under the current scenario, Freeman is still under capacity or at capacity. For the above reasons, please consider extending the grandfather proposal by one year, so all students can finish high school where they start. Thank you.
Before Mrs. Struthers comes, thank you, Mr. Bristow, can I call on John Kessin? John Kessin? Simone Robinson? And then Karen Fountain? Karen Fountain? Karen Fountain, one more time? Karen Fountain? Patrick Miller? Mr. Miller? Thank you, sir. Madam?
Thank you. My name is Carla Struthers. I am the parent of two graduates of Glen Allen High School, and I'm surprised myself to be here today in support of the school board. I have been here numerous times in the past to encourage and push you to support students of color in your district, and you have made steps in this direction, and I appreciate the work that you've done. Now, I recently read an article about a disgruntled grandmother who was concerned about the lesson her child was, or her grandchild was being taught as part of a Black History Month lesson, and I was confused by her concerns. Because the lesson to me seemed logical and rational and supported by fact. And so I want you to make sure that you continue to support your staff as they teach our students history and fact. 50 states is a fact. Was Washington was president is a fact. The fact that portions of our populace spit on and lynched people is fact. In fact, just two days ago, we got our first law that is an anti-lynching law, so it's fact. Do not allow resistance to teaching uncomfortable subjects to sway you from the course of action that provides your students with a well-rounded education. And her question was about, when's the right time? She said, oh, it was too young. There's no right time to learn about the facts of life. Children of color don't have the option of learning about it when they're in high school. They learn about it every day as they grow. She posited that perhaps it should have been taught at home. If it was being taught at home, they wouldn't need it at school. So clearly, the child didn't learn it at, at home, so it needs to be in school. Make sure it stays in school. It's necessary to fill a void. Continue this work. Black students, students of color, students of other religions should not have to demand that authors of color be taught in their classrooms, that the teachers do not feel adequately able to, to teach the class, but that she should be able to learn that fact. You've got to, you've got to continue this work. And as you work through the redistricting process, remember that you need to help our children to engage within a diverse heterogenous community, rather than the monolithic silos that make their parents more comfortable. This is all about making people uncomfortable to learn something different, something new. Those monolithic communities, monolithic lessons will not prepare our students for the 21st century. We will have a majority-minority community, where businesses will reward professionals who have the capacity to effectively engage with people who are different from them in culture and race and lived experiences. So continue this work. Don't let people put an obstacle in your way. It takes nine months to birth a baby, and then you've got 21 years to raise it, and it's going to take you time to move forward and continue this work. Don't let people stop you from doing that good work. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Reverend Cooper, Dr. Cashwell, and members of the school board. Again, I stand before you. I'm part of Stonegate and Covered Bridge. My affiliation is Short Pump, Pocahontas, and Godwin. Before I get into some of my prepared remarks, you know, I'd like to take and reflect and appreciate the words that the school board made about two weeks ago during the work session. For seven days, it was a breath of fresh air that this process was going to reflect the public feedback that many of us have been bringing for a long time. Hearing that you hear what we're saying is encouraging. However, at the joint committee session, despite taking the over 1,000 pages of public comment from 2020, the committee, under the guidance of our consultant, Cropper, decided nothing would move forward for the public information session next week. That's discouraging, as our community has continued to raise the issues about safety for weeks and months at this point, yet we're going to a public information session that has not acted upon it. When the E-series maps came out, immediately, our community raised these concerns. They weren't acted upon. The E2, the E3, the E4 maps come. But without arguing about EMAPs and DMAPs, you know, I'd rather step back and look at what the 1,000 pages of public comments say. It says, let's, let's put safety first. Let's look at our neighborhood schools. Let's affect the fewest number of students as possible. I think, you know, whether folks are going to speak for D4, or E4, or whatever they're going to speak for today, it's not about neighborhoods against neighborhoods. It's about this community saying, please, take safety into consideration. Please affect the fewest number of students as possible. Look, with safety, the Henrico citizen earlier this week on Monday talked about region launches pedestrian safety measures. Yet, we're talking about moving students miles and miles away from their neighborhood schools. This seems counter. We talk about investment in developing sidewalks and walkable, walkability in the Three Chop and Church Road corridor, yet we want to move students far away. Specific, when we talk about Covered Bridge and Stonegate. It's, as I mentioned before, it's seven football fields between the property boundaries. I hope everybody thought about Stonegate and Covered Bridge during the Super Bowl. When I look at the GIS map, it's about 16 property houses to go between our community. And while our students aren't Olympians yet, the record for 800 meters is a minute 42. That's pretty close. But it's not just about Stonegate and Covered Bridge. Please, for Henrico, keep our students at their neighborhood schools and affect the fewest number as possible. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Cashwell, Chairman Reverend Cooper, and board members. Thank you very much for hearing me again this evening. I'm here to express my disappointment that, in many ways, we're right back to where we started. It's dizzying, it's frustrating, and it's disappointing. I'm not under the impression that saying something loud, saying something often, means that I'm going to get my way. But I do believe that common sense should always prevail. That's why I'm here. We should be acting with precision. We should be acting measured. We should be acting with common sense. At this point in the process, I feel that neither is happening. My neighborhood, Stonegate, is, and Covered Bridge, is a mile, well, where I live, is a half-mile door-to-border from our neighborhood school, Godwin. I'm literally able, as the E4 maps would show, literally able to look out of my bedroom window, out my back door, and see neighbors who would be going to Godwin. I can see my neighbors walk past my house and go to Godwin. Does that make sense to you? It certainly doesn't to me. I would, I can drive out of my neighborhood, past neighborhoods that are much further than mine, they'd have to drive past my house to go to what I feel is my neighborhood school. That certainly doesn't make sense to me. My family supports D4 for many of the same reasons that our Crestview neighbors support E4. So what I'm hearing from everyone is that proximity is important. What I'm hearing from everyone is that community is important. Keeping neighborhoods together is important. I'm asking that when these maps finally do make their way to your hands, that you will offer a measured approach. Thank you.
Honorable School Board Chairman, Representative Superintendent, colleagues, and citizens, my name is Patrick Miller. This is my sixth year with Henrico County Public Schools and my first year teaching English at Highland Springs High School, where I sponsor the National English Honor Society and proudly execute my duties as an instructor and mentor to my students. I'm also proud to serve on the Board of Directors for the Henrico Education Association. Tonight, I would like to discuss a straightforward and quantifiable issue with Highland Springs' dismissal procedure. Our dismissal bell does not ring until long after 3:55 PM. According to our administration, this is because the buses are consistently at least 10 minutes late to Highland Springs, which in turn is because they are consistently late to Fairfield Middle School. We are instructed over the announcements every afternoon to hold our students in our classroom, as are the teachers at Fairfield. While a high school's teacher's workday, according to contract, is from 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM, we are losing 10 of the 30 minutes of clerical and planning time allotted to us at the end of our day. 10 minutes times 180 days is 1,800 minutes, which equals 30 hours, which is 3.75 eight-hour workdays. When I shared this with my colleagues in the West End, they were appalled. Regardless of the punctuality of the buses, it is my understanding that the bell is apparently never late at any other high schools in the county. On a related topic, teachers at the Springs give up their contract-mandated planning time several times a week for hall duty or to cover other classes for our colleagues. The custodial staff is half the size it ought to be, yet they still do the work of an entire custodial crew every night. We do these things because we are committed professionals and members of a close-knit community, and because we know that if we did not, the entire school would come to a screeching halt, and it would be putting the safety and education of our students at risk. Put simply, we know there is no difference between our working conditions and our students' learning conditions. learning conditions. Is this really one Henrico, or is it still a tale of two counties? How are the school, students at Highland Springs and Fairfield Middle expected to feel when their time and their freedom of movement is infringed upon every day they come to school? How are teachers expected to honor their contracts when their contracts are not being honored? It is demoralizing both to students, who are being told, in essence, that they are less important than students to the west of them, and to teachers, who already go above and beyond for our kids with what limited resources we have. Before I leave, I would just like to ask, is the cause of these ongoing disparities merely geographic, or is it socioeconomic, or is it something worse? Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Miller. Can I have, can we have next Jennifer Andrews? Ms. Andrews, Jennifer Andrews? Next, I'll have Nikki Donovan, Nikki Donovan? Can I have Mac Ross? I think I called Karen Fountain. Is Karen Fountain here? Karen Fountain? Madam, you may begin.
Thank you, Dr. Cooper. Members of the school board, Dr. Cashwell, colleagues. You've heard a lot about the feelings of your employees tonight. I, too, did not get a pay compression fixed last year. I do want to thank the school board for all they do, and, you know, we've worked, the HEA has worked closely with all of you, and we do support, we appreciate your support for educators. Let me also just raise up that it's not just teachers, it's other employees in the county that need consideration in pay and working conditions. Your instructional assistants, your C&amp;M staff, your custodians, clerical, bus drivers, everybody is valued. Thank you.
Chairman Reverend Cooper, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell, I'm here to express my ongoing frustration with the redistricting process. Outdated and insufficient data has been used at times to generate these options. The first maps were created using enrollment data from 2018 and 19. This year's data came in prior to the December meetings. Given the change in numbers, there was a request by the committee to redraw the maps using the new data, but direction was given not to do so and instead to continue tweaking inaccurate maps. Last year, Holman Middle was at 94%, Short Pump at 79%. This year, Holman is down to 89%, and Short Pump is up to 86%. In addition, it was not announced until January that there are an estimated 100 students from prior redistricting two years ago that are grandfathered into Holman right now and thus counted in Holman's enrollment instead of at Short Pump where they are zoned. Factoring this in, the numbers now put Holman at 79% and Short Pump at 95%. They're flip-flopped. The grandfathered student data should have been known and factored into the original maps. Because it was not, the Sadler Road area was moved out of Holman to Short Pump in the early draft options. This month, option D4 finally fixed our middle school and feeder pattern issues, but the E4 map continues to have us zoned for Short Pump unnecessarily. The E4 map also gives us a small feeder pattern split of only 13% going to Glen Allen High. Only the Sadler Road area would be split off from Short Pump Middle, whereas the majority would go to Deep Run. When the committee met on February 6th to work on feeder pattern issues, this one was last on the list. The committee ran out of time to review it and admitted as such. At the next meeting, the split was mentioned at the bottom of the slide, but again, was not discussed. How is this okay? Also, at the February 6th meeting, the committee opted to move all of Shady Grove Elementary to a different middle school in the E4 map. They were fixing a 3% split from Shady Grove to Holman. Instead of moving that 3% back into Short Pump, their current school, they decided to move 100% to Holman. Yes, to fix 3%, they moved 100%. In doing so, they basically swapped Sadler Road with Wyndham between the same two middle schools and will now bus Sadler Road to a school that is farther away. I also have concerns about the attendance, or rather, absence, of some committee members. While I know the committee works very hard, and I thank them for it, we need a sizable population to help make educated decisions. At the February 6th joint meeting, that completely changed the middle school for Shady Grove, we counted only 20 members present, 20 out of 67. That's less than 30% of the committee making important decisions that impact numerous families and children. Most organizations require a quorum to make any decisions. Does this not apply to redistricting an entire county? In conclusion, due to insufficient data, disruption of more families than necessary, and a lack of attendance by some committee members, it is very difficult to have faith in a process that should be a benefit to all Henrico County students. Thank you for your time.
Dr. Cooper, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell, Big Wade. My name is Mac Ross, and I live in the Cross Key subdivision along the Church Road corridor. I'm not going to stand here and argue about who should be at what school. I'm going to talk about the process. If the process is genuine, I may not like the result, but I can at least live with it. In December, I spoke to you about what our county manager calls the Henrico Way, and how this redistricting process has been anything but. In keeping with quoting great employees of Henrico County, I'm going to channel the words every Freeman student in the early '90s heard daily from our principal. "If you always do what you've always done, you'll always get what you've always gotten." That was the signature phrase of Mr. Tom Stravidis. Tying this to the redistricting process, Ms. Ogburn, when our neighborhood met with you on December 5th at Pocahontas, you did something we cannot thank you enough for. You told us, quote, "We know this is a problem. It is a train wreck," end quote. But you shouldn't have whispered it. You should have shouted it from the rooftops. The one thing that any constituent wants is the unabashed truth. God bless you for it, and I think you would be hard-pressed to find anyone who disagreed with you. At last Wednesday's joint committee meeting, I hope those of you that were there watched the real Matthew Cropper exposed. He brought 14 concerns to the group, as you directed. But who, with any sort of leadership and business training or even common sense, tries to have 67 people, all with different agendas, vote up or down on each one of the 14 different issues? Thank God the committee stood together and told Cropper they were not going to take part in his shenanigans and play his reindeer games of voting against each other. They clearly could see right through it. And as for the committee member who stood up and said the school board is just politicians who need to stay out of it and let the committee do their job, apparently she, like Cropper, feels there are committee of one. These are our maps. These are Henrico County's maps. They are not that lady's maps, and they sure as heck are not Ohio's maps. You do what we elected you to do, and that's stand up for us. I don't get a voice on either of those committees. You're my voice. Last year's board sat silent, didn't interject anything, and you see where that's gotten us. I applaud you for finally inserting yourselves. "If you always do what you've always done, you'll always get what you've always gotten." If you have people who think they are bigger than the committee, vote them off the island. If this consultant keeps proving his incompetence, then wish him well in his future endeavors, because if you don't, where we're going to keep getting, where we're going is to keep getting the neighbor versus neighbor retaliations and bad tidings that we've had. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ross. Aaron Barr, Aaron Barr? Yes, sir? Please come with us, sir. That'll be fine. Stephanie Brown, Stephanie Brown. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Jeff Britt, Jeff Britt. Thank you so much, Mr. Britt. And please state your name, madam, when you get started. Thank you. And then Luke Kessin, Luke Kessin. Come on, Mr. Kessin. You may begin, madam. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Beth Hurnquist. I'm here in support of the neighborhoods immediately surrounding Springfield Park Elementary School.
Can you pull the mic a little closer? Thank you, ma'am. That's okay.
Specifically regarding neighborhoods of Lexington, Greensprings, Old Springfield, The Woods, and The Village at Ensbroke. Our kids go to Springfield Park Elementary School, Holman Middle School, and Glen Allen. I'm here in opposition of high school option D4. This option senselessly cuts our neighborhood out of Glen Allen High School and places us at Tucker. We're extremely concerned about what this proposed change will mean for our kids in our community. Families that are here tonight from our neighborhoods are not, are standing in support but are not coming up here. We're being respectful of your time. We have, though, obtained 200 signatures of a petition, and we've submitted feedback through the website as we've been directed. As mentioned earlier, our children all attend Holman Middle School. It's important that we level-set on the number of students in our neighborhood that will be affected by this change as they transition into high school. We're talking about 47 children. Based on the agenda handouts dated February 19th, option D4 has 142 students from Holman across all three grades that will attend Tucker. On a per-grade basis, that's 47 kids. That doesn't take into consideration kids that will be selected to attend specialty centers. In reality, that number is more like 30 or 35 students that will be going to Tucker. Based on those handouts, our kids would represent less than 10% of the incoming freshman class at Tucker. This option proposes to send this very small group of children into a school of more than 1,800 kids where they literally won't know anyone else, leaving them to navigate the already challenging transition to high school without their middle school friends and peers. Their middle school buddies will be at Glen Allen and Deep Run. As students at Holman, which is situated between Glen Allen High School and Deep Run, these kids are actively engaged in activities that are within those boundaries, including participating in activities at the Shady Grove Y and Glen Allen Athletics. This really is the definition of a contiguous community. It simply doesn't make sense to remove our children from their peers and from their community and send them to Tucker. Set aside that it's not the right thing to do, it's out of alignment with the stated goals and guidelines of the committee. By carving out our neighborhoods, the committee disregarded Broad Street as a major road or boundary, as D4 takes the boundary line north of Broad to capture our small area. Surely, no one can dispute that Broad Street is a major road. In addition, as I mentioned, it breaks the contiguous community and disrupts the K-12 progress of these students. As mentioned several times tonight, that K-12 progress is important to kids. The relationships built in middle school are imperative to their success in high school. There's a significant amount of research that's been done on that fact. Kids that transition to high school with their middle school peers are more successful socially and academically. In closing, we ask you to remember the small group of children we're talking about if D4 is adopted. Forty-seven children. Thank you.
I'm Stephanie Brown, and I'm speaking to you tonight as a parent, but I'm also speaking to you as an investor and a business owner who chose to relocate to Henrico County. I'm here to say that teacher pay is not a cost. It is not an expense. Teacher pay is an investment in this county. Please remember that investors and people who are in business in this county rely on these teachers to develop informed, thoughtful, and skilled citizens. We would like to ask you to pay Henrico teachers more. We want the best people teaching in our schools, and we need to attract them and to retain them with much better salaries. When the salary compression issue was explained to me, I literally did not believe it, based upon my experience dealing with employees. It strikes me as unfair and needs to be addressed so that veteran teachers can be retained. They are the leaders, students need them, and younger teachers rely upon them. I've seen a lot of wonderful construction going on in Henrico County, and when I ask my kids about it, and when, if you were to talk to students about it, I think what you would hear is an earful about their teachers. Their teachers are what make the difference in their day-to-day lives. I often also hear, and you may have heard, that it is only the parents that make the difference. That is only partly true. Parents are a significant part of public education, but public education, to me, is like trains that are running on a track. The parents give the students a general direction, but it's the teachers that throw the switches. And a great teacher can take a kid who is not even well-prepared in life, who may have very difficult circumstances, and make 100% difference by getting all the best teachers all the way along the line. I ask you to increase teacher pay as high as you can, and then I ask you to dig deeper and pay them more. Do everything you can to retain experienced teachers, diminish turnover, and make every talented education student in Virginia dream of one day working for Henrico County. I've begun a petition. I have wonderful support from everybody and every parent that I've spoken to, and I hope I can get that to you shortly, and thank you very much for your time.
My name is Jeff Britt. I'm here on behalf of the Pemberton Corridor, and I'll ask my neighbors from the Pemberton Road area to stand up, please. Out of respect for your time tonight, I'll be speaking on behalf of our community. I'm here speaking on behalf of close to 800 residents, parents, and voters that have signed a petition to keep the Pemberton Corridor at Freeman High School. I'm going to turn these in tonight. The Pemberton Corridor includes eight neighborhoods with about 130 high school kids. We currently attend Freeman. For several months now, we've been fighting to stay at Freeman and resist a potential move to Tucker. And it's not because we have anything against Tucker. It's because the Pemberton Corridor was just rezoned 10 years ago. I've said this before, but it bears repeating. In 2009, students in our area were moved from Tuckahoe Middle to Quayacase Middle, and kids were moved from Godwin to Freeman, impacting close to 300 students. Now, here we are again, facing another round of redistricting and potentially a third high school in just 10 years. Enough's enough. I do want to thank the board, however, for their recent public comments on the process. It was a sign that maybe some of the public's feedback is being heard. It was a sign that maybe the committee will look for efficiencies when cleaning up feeder patterns, not just make sweeping changes that arbitrarily move thousands of students. It was a sign that maybe placing value on community should be a priority in this process. And it was a sign that maybe logic and reason will be introduced into the process, though that remains to be seen. I especially appreciate the board placing emphasis on limiting student disruptions when it's not necessary. In particular, I appreciate Mrs. Shea asking the school planning staff to study enrollment trends and model utilization percentages five years out. County data shows that enrollment is trending down across the board. The current freshman class, which is grandfathered, is the largest countywide. Enrollment drops incrementally in classes that follow this freshman bubble. However, Cropper and the committee are making decisions based on today's utilization score, not what it will be when the current freshman class graduates. Shouldn't we be making decisions on school boundaries based on future enrollment? Not what it is today? Bottom line, the Pemberton Corridor supports high school option D4, it keeps us at Freeman, and has the least student disruptions across the board. That's a fact. And we're not alone. It says something that so many other different communities from across the county support D4, all for different reasons. It does the most good with the least disruption, and that should count for something in this process. Thank you.
My name is Luke Kessin. I am from Stonegate/Covered Bridge, and I currently go to Pocahontas Middle School. When you walk into my school, you instantly are met with a giant poster that has the four cornerstones of Henrico. In fact, it is almost the same poster as the one over there. It states the goals: safety and wellness, relationships, academic growth, and equity and opportunity. If you decide to move me from my neighborhood school to Tucker, you would be violating three out of the four cornerstones that are highlighted in these posters. You'd be violating relationships, because I would lose a relationship that I've been building and that I've had for seven years of my life. And very few of the people that go to my, that go to Pocahontas would be going to Tucker as well. That would make me feel alone and isolated, and we don't want that, do we? That would make me feel alone and isolated, and we don't want that, do we? Also, the border that they use to divide the kids going from Tucker to Godwin is on a creek that is under a bridge. They built the bridge to connect the neighborhood to two neighborhoods. It would be violating safety, because it would move me from Godwin, that is a half-mile away, to Tucker, that is five and a half miles away. From Tucker to my house, I would have to cross three major roads, including Interstate 64. From my house to Godwin, there's only one road that I would have to cross. It would be violating academic growth, because it has been proven in more, in several studies, that moving schools decreases the grades and academic growth of students. It has also been proved to increase depression rates. Children often feel isolated when being separated from relationships, which have been, which has also been proven to decrease grades. By moving from Godwin to Tucker, it will be indirectly leading, it will indirectly lead to decreasing of not only my grades, but others like me as well. I hope that you take this into consideration of all the things that I have said, as well as the others that have come here to speak today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for that. Next, we'll have Steve Glisman. Steve Glisman. After Mr. Glisman, we're going to have Sean Tillichek. Sean Tillichek. Next, can I get Susan St. George? Susan St. George? Thank you so much. Before you speak, I just want to say to our teachers, thank you all for coming out tonight. I say that sincerely from my fellow board members, as well as Dr. Cashwell. We do hear you and just know that we are committed to ensuring that you all receive the highest compensation that we can, along with our board of peers at the Board of Supervisors. Again, thank you all before you all leave tonight for coming back. Yes, sir.
Dr. Cashwell, Chairman Reverend Cooper, members of the board. My name is Steve Glisman. I'm a homeowner in the Covered Bridge community, which is adjacent to the Stonegate neighborhood. Our neighborhoods are west of Gaskins Road and east of Pump Road. We are approximately one mile from Godwin High School and are currently zoned for Short Pump, Pocahontas, and Godwin. Our neighborhoods strongly support option D4, which maintains our current zoning. Covered Bridge and Stonegate are also smaller neighborhoods without a homeowners association, so I'm very glad to have this opportunity to speak with you this evening regarding our thoughts and concerns about the redistricting process. First, I'd like to thank the school board members for their comments at the last school board meeting. In the midst of a very frustrating process, in which many of us have felt we have not had a voice, it was very encouraging to hear your statements. You've demonstrated that you are listening to the voters and the taxpayers, and we do appreciate that. In addition, I would like to thank the redistricting committee members, to thank these volunteers for all their hard work, time, and dedication in this effort. They've spent many hours reviewing, working, and meeting on this process, all in the eye of the public. We owe them a debt of gratitude for their work. While I found encouragement in the words of the school board, this has not allayed my concerns, however, on the redistricting process, particularly in Cropper GIS. A good example of this was the joint committee meeting held on last February 19th. At this meeting, Cropper presented the committee 14 different areas of concerns related to the D4 and E4 options. There was great confusion on exactly what the committee members were to vote on, and what would the consequences of their votes mean, including voting for one item would have an unintended effect on the other 13 items. This confusion was also shared by the citizen spectators watching the meeting as it devolved into chaos. In the end, the joint committee declined to vote on anything, the conclusion of a wasted evening for the volunteers on both the elementary and secondary committees. Another example of the poor leadership, unfortunately, by Cropper GIS. In conclusion, as a resident and neighbor, resident of Covered Bridge and neighbor of the Stonegate community, I would like to state my preference for the current D4 options. While my personal preference would be that the entire redistricting process would end without any changes, D4 appears to move the least number of students as possible, maximizes safety, and maintains the continuity of feeder patterns in communities. When the time to vote arrives in May, I ask you, the school board, to remember what you've heard of from the voters and taxpayers of Henrico County over the last few months. Thank you for listening, and thank you very much for your time this evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sean Tillichek. My daughters and my wife would be here tonight, but they're at the Crestview International Dinner, where they're sampling dinners from over 30 countries. It's a wonderful thing that they do at Crestview, and it speaks volumes to what Crestview adds to Freeman High School. I think it's unfortunate that the failures and deficiencies in the step system have come to light during this redistricting process for the teachers that have left tonight, but certainly for you as well as new board members. So, my heart goes out to you with that. I've spoken several times to this board about the fact that I think it's clear which options better ensure the safety, the well-being of our students, maintain the community character, and respect the historical feeder patterns. I'm not going to rehash that tonight. I know you don't want to hear it, so I won't beat it up anymore. I do hope that Pemberton and Crestview can continue to share Freeman together. I want Pemberton to have the same historical community relationship with Freeman that Crestview and Tuckahoe has had throughout the years. I think it's important that they not be switched again. But I want to speak to you about something that has haunted me throughout this whole process, and that's the people that aren't here tonight. They're simply not here, and they haven't been at all. It's the parents and the children that aren't here because they're either scared to be here, or they don't know why they should be here. And that is the Latino and Asian communities that are in the Crestview area. I have a Latino family right across from me. They didn't even know what was going on. We tried to explain it to them, but they really don't get the magnitude of it. We've gone to the restaurants, and we've gone to some homes, and we just cannot convince them of the magnitude, and they're scared to be here, and they really think that they're just not going to be represented. Like, whatever's going to happen is going to happen, and that's a terrible thought, because you have one express command in those guidelines, and that is reduce concentrations of poverty. Yet, time and time again, I see a D option that ignores this mandate, and time and time again, I see attempts to justify it by Cropper when he speaks to the decision-makers. In life, you often see that the easy decision and the wrong decision go hand in hand. It's very difficult to make the right decision. It takes guts to make the right decision, because it's often the hard one. But I believe that each of you were elected because you're constituents, and this county believes you have the guts to make the hard decisions. Someone said something in a meeting recently, and it was, "We can move." They're right. A lot of these middle-class families that are here can move, but the people that are in the reduced concentrations of poverty, they can't. They don't have that option. They're counting on you to do the right thing, so they don't have to make a decision like that. There is only one high school option that significantly relieves the economic disparity between Tucker and Freeman, and that's option E. Thank you.
Dr. Cashwell, Chairman Reverend Cooper, school board representatives. My name is Susan St. George. I'm all from the Monumental Floral Gardens neighborhood, which is in the Crestview area school zone. I would like to talk just about the, I think, as many people who are also here are very familiar with the maps, there are, in Henrico County, some of the older middle and high schools are sort of clumped together and situated quite centrally within kind of like the central western portion of the county. Because of that, and the county has expanded outward, there are neighborhoods that are almost literally equally far or close, however you want to view it, from several schools. There are neighborhoods that are equally close to Godwin and Tucker, equally close to Freeman and Godwin, some even that extend down to the southern borders of the county that are equally close to both of those schools. And there's even an area that is equally close to both, excuse me, Godwin, Tucker, and Freeman High Schools. And because of how the schools are positioned, and then the county has expanded outward, the location of a lot of these neighborhoods would allow them to easily and safely attend more than one middle school or more than one high school. However, where Crestview Elementary School Zone is, we are kind of, you know, we dip out on the southeastern edge of Henrico, bordering the city of Richmond. We do not fall into one of these categories. The absolute closest school to us is almost four miles away, high school and middle school from the outer reaches of our zone. So, I would respectfully ask that when the board is considering options of which students to move, that like others have stated, proximity is considered, but again, remembering or realizing that there are several areas that have close proximity to two or even three schools. I won't, you know, mention what others from the Crestview area again have mentioned. I won't go over it, but as I think most of the board members know, Crestview has had to be involved from the very beginning of this process. We've had people from our community at, I think, just about every committee meeting, maybe not all the elementary, but every secondary committee meeting, every school board session, every public walk, gallery session. We've been very involved. We, you know, while we may not agree with every map that may come out, we've tried to be very respectful of the process. And if the school board decides that students must be moved, especially with the options that are currently on the table, we would ask that they consider moving more students from Quillacosa Middle School. This school already feeds into Tucker, and the elementary schools that feed into Quillacosa Middle School are much closer to Tucker. Again, not exactly where our elementary school is. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much. Next, we're going to have Susan St. George. Susan St. George? Oh, that's Ms. George. Okay, thank you, Ms. St. George. I apologize. Please forgive me. I'm Dermaine McMahon. Dermaine McMahon. Cody Rico. Cody Rico. We want to, again, say thank you to every... Mr. Beasley?
Madam Supervisor, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I want to say thank you for this opportunity. I just, as I listened tonight, there were some things that came to mind that I just wanted to highlight. First and foremost, Dr. Cashwell, I want to say thank you to you. I just thought it was very encouraging that there's an environment that allows teachers to feel comfortable to come up here and express with honesty issues that address them. I can remember a time when they may not have felt that comfort, so I think that that is absolutely amazing that you're cultivating that type of environment. The second thing was, I just... The second thing I wanted to do was acknowledge those young ladies that came in here and spoke about advocacy for an issue that I think is a very important issue, but I think it sort of speaks to the quality of education that truly exists here, and the attitude that's being conveyed multiculturally about social justice for everybody. And last but not least, I hear the parents talking about their concerns about redistricting, and I'm not up here to defend anybody's issues about what's the best plan, but I will say this. I've heard too many times J.R. Tucker's name and Hermitage High School's name mentioned in concerns. I just want to state for the record that you get a great education at J.R. Tucker and a great education at Hermitage High School. Both of those schools are led by outstanding principals with loving staffs. So, however it shakes out, I want to lay concerns of any family member whose child may have to be restructured, that they're going to be okay. They may have to go a little farther, and they may have to do some things with different children, but many of the great things that they currently do at their school, they'll be able to do at whatever school they'll go to, because that's the greatness of Henrico County Public Schools. Thank you for allowing me to make that comment.
Thank you so much, Mr. Beasley. Again, thank you all, teachers, concerned citizens, parents, and even the youngest student advocates. We're so appreciative of your comments tonight.